If we could get the roll call, please.
Chair Wyler.
Here.
Vice Chair Barber. Commissioner Makaro.
Here.
Commissioner Spear.
Here.
Commissioner Jester. Commissioner Stevie.
Here.
And Commissioner Cora.
Thank you. Any comments, discussion on the minute? Anyone want to make a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second.
We have a motion to approve in a second. If we could get the vote.
Hit all the buttons yet, one second. All right, and voting has been opened on your screens, please. The vote is five zero to approve.
All right, thank you. This time, are there any written communications on items that are not on the agenda?
None at this time.
Any oral communications?
None at this time.
At that point, we'll go ahead and move to public hearings. Our first public hearing item is PL 24-0007. It is the Consistency Amendments to the Land Use Element and East Valley Area Plan. And staff has a presentation? Oh, yeah, go ahead, sorry.
Thank you, Planning Commission and everyone. Good evening, my name is Priscilla Roldan. I'm an Associate Planner in the Planning Division here at the City of Escondido. And today, I'll be presenting on this item. The request before you today is to recommend City Council approval to amend the land use element, the general plan land use element, as well as the East Valley Parkway area plan, so they are in conformance with the adopted East Valley specific plan. For today's presentation, I'll begin with a bit of background on the plans. Then I'll provide a high-level overview of the proposed text amendments before I conclude today's presentation with some next steps. It's worth noting that as part of the staff report, I did provide a complete breakdown, including a redline version of the documents. So to begin with background, California state law requires jurisdictions to have general plans as part of the set of long-range documents in their documents. General plans are long-range blueprints for how the city will grow and develop. They set a city's goals, policies, and programs. Along with general plans, cities have the ability to develop area plans as well as master plans. These are extensions of the general plan, and they focus on a specific area or community. And this could be like a downtown area, for example. For the general plan, there are implementation tools that cities could use in order to bring the general plan's vision to life. That includes the zoning code as well as specific plans. The zoning code includes regulations and ordinances that can set standards. This could be regulations around the use of parcels, orientation of structures, for example. And for specific plans, they are similar to area plans in the sense that they do focus on a specific area within the city. However, because they undergo a higher level of scrutiny in regards to the California government code, they do have a greater legal weight in compared to area plans. It's important to note that California state law requires jurisdictions to adequately plan for future housing in California. And every city needs to adjust their zoning code, planning, and programming to meet future housing needs. And in order to meet the regional housing needs allocation in 2023, the Escondido City Council adopted the East Valley specific plan. This created conflicts and rezoned some parcels in the East Valley Parkway area plan. So areas east of Harding Street are now in conflict with two different plans. So these have different zoning, and they have different uses. Adoption of the East Valley specific plan also created some conflicts between the general plan. So there is a need to amend the general plan to incorporate a new specific planning area, that is SPA number 16. So amending both documents will not only clarify some discrepancies, making it easier for applicants and staff members to interpret these documents, but it will also bring all documents into conformance as required for California state code, which requires policy documents to not be in conflict with each other. Changes consist of minor text amendments, adjustments, and graphic updates. And I will go over at a high level, but you do have the more detailed redlines documents as part of your staff report. Specifically for the East Valley specific area plan, staff is proposing to remove inaccurate boundary references, updating zoning references, as well as the Escondido Village shopping sub-area, which is now part of the East Valley specific plan. Staff is also proposing to add references to the East Valley specific area plan and update any business data. And as far as the general plan, staff is proposing to remove and adjust bigger boundaries as they relate to the East Valley specific plan. And staff is also proposing to add references to the East Valley specific plan and the new specific planning area number 16. As far as next steps, with your recommendation for City Council approval, staff would move forward and make any of the changes proposed before you tonight. That concludes my presentation, and I welcome any questions.
Okay, thank you very much. Before we get into questions, if we could do this as part of a normal course of our business, when we get to the question portion or anybody needs to make a comment, let me know so I can recognize whoever it is that's going to be speaking. Because what I've, what I found at the last hearing, when I was kind of sitting in the back and listening, I couldn't tell who was speaking. And then listening to the recording of this, because it's on audio, I got a phone call from, from someone out in the public, and they said, "Stan, I can't tell who's talking and saying what, because it's not on video." So if we could do that, that way you can be recognized, and anybody that's listening later knows who's speaking. So if we could do that, at this point, we'll go ahead and open it up to questions of staff. Yeah, Commissioner Stevie?
In your, in the document that was given to us, there was a section, a line, that said "There were discrepancies resolved between the SV, SP, and the land use chapter, specifically with respect to amendments to this document, which will facilitate alternatives to single occupancy vehicle use and increased density contemplated by the Climate Action Plan." Are you familiar with what I'm asking about here? I'm just curious what's, because I read through the documents. I didn't identify anything that, that seemed to speak to that. And I'm just curious to know what amendments were being asked to adopt, which speak to that specifically.
I would have to go back and look at all the amendments that are proposed. But as far as I know, there are no amendments that are being made in relation to the Climate Action Plan, any substantial changes at least. All of them are just referenced just through the East Valley specific plan. I see our city planner is ready to speak, so I'll allow her to chime in.
Yes, so just to answer your question broadly, the only changes before the commission this evening are those for consistency alignment with the previously adopted East Valley specific plan. The portion you're referencing is just an analysis on how these amendments, which are nominal in nature and reference cleanup, are consistent with our Climate Action Plan, which is a previously adopted policy document. It's a standard section we keep in most of our staff reports to ensure compliance. And I believe that the reference here is stating that the East Valley specific plan, which was previously adopted, has those types of components, has that alignment with our Climate Action Plan. And through this adoption, or, or future adoption by council, should they choose to approve these amendments, everything would be in line. So it was really a referential example.
Okay, so there's not like a specific, is it okay if I ask a follow-up? Okay, there's not a specific, like, line, or set of lines, or definitions in here that, that achieve that objective?
Within the proposed amendments that are before you this evening? No.
Okay, and then I do have another question.
Yes, please, and, and just to clarify, you can ask as many questions as you want. It's just when we change people, that's when we want to, or change commissioners, that's when we want to make sure that they're recognized.
Great, okay, thank you. One other thing you talk about doing is changing the sub-area pertaining to Escondido Village shopping. And I'm just curious, what does changing that sub-area mean? I think you're removing it, if I'm not mistaken, in this amended language. So what impact does that actually have on the plan?
I'm happy to jump in there on this. So, thank you for that question. Essentially, the impact was actually when East Valley specific plan was adopted. So when the East Valley specific plan, which is the larger specific plan that was adopted in July 2023, and I'm clarifying this because it can be very confusing, that one document is called East Valley specific plan, and the other is the East Valley Parkway area plan. So the specific plan that was adopted, the boundaries of that specific plan, which entailed a rezoning effort and a change to the land use designations of all those properties, as shown on this slide, include that Escondido Village, I might be butchering that name, the Escondido Subarea Shopping Center component. This cleanup is simply to adjust that boundary, and because the area plan detailed specifications on that former sub-area, we are removing them, because that sub-area no longer exists as of the adoption of the East Valley specific plan.
So where does a sub-area fit in the little schema that was presented to us earlier?
So if you're looking at the slide that's currently up on East Valley specific plan...
Oh, no, I'm sorry, the general plan, and then you had one form of planning and two forms of implementation. What is a, where does a sub-area fit into that? Yes?
The sub-area was nestled within the area plan.
Okay.
And has since been overridden by the specific plan.
Okay, so that Escondido Village shopping sub-area no longer exists, which means as we, if we were to approve this language, what we're saying is that's no longer a designated sub-area. It's a part of the broader area, and we've got specific plans for that broader area.
Not exactly. Your decision tonight will not affect whether that sub-area is dissolved or not. It is already dissolved as of the East Valley specific plan adoption in July. This is purely removing the reference from the area plan so that less people are mistaken as to its existence.
Got it, okay.
Any other questions from the commission? Commissioner Spear?
Yes, thank you. Yeah, I, I found it difficult to track exactly what we were reviewing. What I'm understanding from what you just said was, this is really a reference to boundaries? Is that correct?
Yes, and to clarify, typically, it is common for these types of changes that are before you this evening to go in tandem with the specific plan that is creating that modification. So in this instance, they have been bifurcated, which leads to, I think, additional unfortunate confusion, potentially. But ideally, this all should have been packaged under the East Valley specific plan changes that were adopted.
Okay, some of the, I was looking at the comparisons. You had maps in here that showed the old map and the new map. Small point on that, but as I looked at it, I thought there was no legend on that. Anyone reading that might find it confusing. There were several pages where I didn't see legends.
And to just speak to that, I believe the exhibits that are being shown are really excerpted, kind of zoomed in for reference. When they, when we present to council, there will be a full redline track changes showing, and they will have legend, legends appropriately.
What I found confusing was, basically, I think the language of this approval was to approve amendments B and C. And amendments B and C were referenced to large documents. Those large documents we were looking at didn't have clouded areas or designated areas, underlined areas. Make it understandable if there were any changes between the last approval or this approval. I think what you're saying is, there are no real changes in those documents. We're not approving documents that are changed, is that correct?
So the changes before you are to the Land Use and Community Form Chapter of the general plan. Those specific changes entail updates to, I believe, four figures. Typically, what we provide in long-range document changes is a track changes version, so to speak. It shows underlined, bolded for new language, and strike-through, bolded language for removed language. For the East Valley Parkway area plan, you did receive, I believe, a full document that is track changed showing. So you have bold, underlined for new additions, and then you have strike-throughs. I think the only part where it doesn't strike through is the table of contents, because those number, right, we're crossing out all the old number pages, and we're putting in all the new number pages. It bloats out a document, so that just shows that it's changed in bold underline. For the Land Use and Community Form portion of the edits, there are three pages where we are proposing to make changes, and there are, I believe, four figures. We excerpted that, excerpted that document, because it's about 100 pages, and we are providing those pages where we are proposing the changes. And the figures, to your point, Commissioner Spear, do not show the full final version, which includes the borders, the legends, et cetera. And we will correct that and make sure that looks, has all those elements of a map for City Council. So the final documents are in line with what was existing.
I don't have any further questions right now.
Commissioner Wyler, I actually do have a follow-up question.
Yes, Commissioner Stevie?
I'm not sure at what point it's appropriate to ask this, but as I was reading through the East Valley Parkway area plan, specifically Section 44.4, it stated that there is a plan to create a concentration of Class A office space for large employers, flagship headquarters, buildings, et cetera. I recognize we are not discussing approval of the plan. The plan has been approved. But I am curious what it would look like to, to go back and maybe reconsider that as that stood out as something worth discussing.
So for the purpose, that's in the East Valley Parkway area plan, just for reference, since we're dealing with lots of big documents this evening. Since the proposal before you all is what I would qualify as nominal and not substantive, we didn't address any substantive issues surrounding the plans, either the land use plan or the Parkway, Park area, Parkway area plan. So we aren't directed at this point from City Council to open up this area plan and evaluate it substantively. So at this point, there isn't any staff intention to amend or substantially amend the document for that purpose.
But that would, that would require then the City Council to direct you. That's how, I'm just trying to figure out the mechanism by which we would readdress that.
Yes, typically, we would take direction from City Council if they're looking to update a document that is not being spurred by state law requirements or regulation.
Okay, and that's also why we're talking about the East Valley Parkway plan tonight versus maybe some other part of the city? Is that, that's, that's how that comes before us?
The reason the amendments are before you this evening is because state government code requires all policy documents to be consistent with one another. And right now, we have an adopted specific plan that provides inconsistencies with the land use element, which, and, and the Parkway area plan. So we're trying to align them all.
Right, right, I, yeah, I was, I was just trying to understand the mechanism by which a plan in any capacity comes before us for discussion. So I think you answered that question, it's the City Council.
City Council or state law?
Sure, yeah, got it, that's it, thanks.
Any other questions by the commission? Yeah, Commissioner Jester?
I don't have the staff report in front of me, I apologize. What's, what's the recommendation of staff on this to send this to City Council?
Any other questions? I don't, I don't have any questions. Thank you for the, for the presentation and answering the various questions that the Planning Commission has. Any other discussion and entertaining motion? I'll make a motion then, I'll move to approve PL 24-0007 as the recommended by staff.
Could I just clarify, is that the correct number, Veronica? Because I was, I think it should be for Resolution Number 2024-03. Sorry, I just want to make sure on the record is clear.
You are correct, 2024-03, there's a typo on the staff report.
Okay.
You're moving to approve the resolution, not to adapt a specific...
Sorry, and I don't see the, I appreciate that.
No problem, it's right at the end of the staff report, is where the staff recommends the resolution.
Is it? Oh, oh, there it is, got it, okay, sorry, thank you. So the motion would be to adopt Resolution Number 2023-03. Second.
2024-03, sorry.
24. And I'm really having a heck of a time tonight. 2024-03. All right, there's a motion?
Second.
We have a second from Commissioner Spear, if we...
Voting has been opened.
Go ahead and vote.
The vote is five zero to recommend approval to City Council.
Great, all right, that ends our public hearings. Now we'll move on to current business. The first item of current business is PL 24-0082, the 2023 Climate Action Plan Annual Monitoring Report. And we have a staff presentation.
Good evening, Chair Wyler, Commissioners, Veronica Marona, City Planner. And I am here this evening to present to you the calendar year 2023 Annual Monitoring Report on our Climate Action Plan. So the request before you is just a receive and file, it's informational. This item will go before the City Council for their receive and file as well. We annually present to the Planning Commission and to the City Council an update on where the city is in implementation of the Climate Action Plan. Just a little bit of background on our Climate Action Plan, which I will now refer to as our CAP, for brevity's sake. It's built around several state directives, including AB 32 and SB 32, which are statewide initiatives to achieve certain greenhouse gas reductions by certain target years. The original CAP was a part of the 2020, excuse me, the 2012 general plan, comprehensive general plan update that the city undertook. And the first Climate Action Plan was adopted in 2013 as a result of that general plan update. Subsequently, the CAP was updated comprehensively in March of 2021. Our CAP's objectives are to reduce our citywide GHG greenhouse gas emissions by certain targets, as you see on this slide, 42% below certain baseline levels that are established at the year 2012 by a certain year date, 2030. And then another, a goal subsequently of 52% below those 2012 levels by 2035. Our CAP is built on nine reduction strategies, so nine larger strategies aimed at reducing greenhouse gas emissions, and then two resilient strategies. So these are two strategies that are large umbrellas of how to be more resilient in the face of the effects of climate change. This slide depicts what those 11 strategies are. As you can see in blue, one through nine, these are the GHG reduction strategies. And then those strategies that have the A prefix, and are in orange, are resilient strategies. These range from things like reducing our fossil fuel use and increasing water efficiency, to becoming a climate smart leader and building thriving and resilient neighborhoods. So to break down the CAP a little bit, for those who maybe are not as familiar with the document, of those 11 strategies, there are 139 total metrics by which the CAP identifies ways for us to work on reducing through those strategies. So the strategies are the top of that pyramid. They're large, they're broad, and below them, there are a number of measures. So these measures are more pointed, they're what the city would be doing to reduce or achieve certain goals. And then those metrics, of which there are 139, are how the city is going to achieve that. They tend to be more quantifiable, more direct, more pointed. So as an example, we have a strategy, reduce fossil fuels. The, one of the measures that is under the reduced fossil fuel umbrella is through synchronizing our traffic signals. The metric is that we are aiming to reduce, or we are aiming to synchronize 23 traffic signals by 2030. So again, this is just a visual example now of that measure, that strategy measure metric broken down, as you will see in the larger annual monitoring report that is under attachment one of your staff report. So you can see that we give a status update of where it is. That status update is fairly broad, right? Has it been implemented, or, excuse me, has it, if it has yet to be implemented, meaning we have not kicked off that effort? Whether it's in progress or ongoing, some of these efforts are annual things the city will undertake or already does, and so they are ongoing as opposed to a concrete start and a finite end. And then items that are completed. We also identify that measure. Each measure is given a, a nominal numeric and lettered value. So in this case, this measure is T-2.1. We also give you the title, who is responsible for implementing it and tracking progress on that programmatic level, as well as implementation, staff, general staff implementation, implementation costs, how easy it is to actually implement, and then the quantified metric tons of carbon dioxide equivalent that that strategy would result in a reduction of. You will note that throughout that document, some items have a number in that column, some items do not, some items are very quantitative, they were built around a value, other items are very qualitative, and they're more of a, there is no associated quantitative reduction, as far as our CAP is, has identified. Didn't click through that, sorry about that. So our 2023 implementation year, we had five emission categories that we achieved some movement in, related transportation, energy, water and wastewater, solid waste, carbon sequestration. For our transportation and energy items, we had several achievements. We added an additional EV fleet vehicle to the city. We installed a couple of additional charges, chargers at the Public Works yard, so on, on a city property. And the Engineering Division began an update to the general plan mobility element. The mobility element is our circulation and infrastructure chapter of our general plan. And as you'll note, we have several items that are yet to be implemented and had an implementation date that is now past due. So the implementation date might have been 2023, 2022, 2021, et cetera. When it comes to water and wastewater, we were able to hire an additional planner, Priscilla Roldan, to help us with our long-range efforts, which includes updating our landscape ordinance as it relates to water efficiency. So that's something we anticipate moving through, whereas it has previously been on hold. And no items are past due in that category. For solid waste, we were able to increase our diversion rate of solid waste from landfills to various other mechanisms, such as organics recycling or recycling in general. We also were able to partner with several organizations to host cleanups and waste diversion events. And at this time, there's nothing past due for this category. For carbon sequestration, we were able to plant additional trees this year as part of an annual event. We were able to update our jurisdictional runoff management plan. And the city received award, notification that we would be awarded a grant through the USDA to create a urban forestry management plan. Currently, there are... Currently, there are several ordinance, ordinances and programs that are past due on this item, however. For resiliency, we had several achievements as well. One of the largest was, as it relates to the last item, the adoption of the East Valley Specific Plan. We also worked with NCTD to work on a redevelopment, step one, step, step zero point one for the Escondido Transit Center. An update to our hazard, hazard management plan is underway, and our fire department is working with our emergency management folks to create an extreme heat response plan essentially. We do have a couple of items past due in this category. Finally, with resiliency strategy A two, we had several achievements again. One of our largest ones is that we are working on our comprehensive active transportation strategy, which will help create things like a safer outs to school plan. So that is a big achievement that we're working toward. The city was also awarded a multimillion dollar grant to work on bringing certain sites, certain parcels within the city out of the flood zone. So that is a large achievement, and we do have a few items past due on this item as well. So progress to date, this gives you an idea of how many of those metrics have been completed, are in progress, and yet to be started. Our next steps on this item will be to present this information in the monitoring report, which is attachment one, to your staff report to city council on July tenth for their receive and filing. That concludes staff's presentation, and I am available to answer questions on the monitoring report or the CAP more generally.
Okay, thank you. Any questions of Ms. Marona? Commissioner Justin? Oh, right before we have that, Commissioner Stevie, if you've got a question.
Yeah, just one, since, since you did say I could ask about the CAP. That was a fateful line. You shouldn't have done that. No, so my one question is, you, there, there is in the CAP is one of the, you seem to have two kind of conflicting categories. On the one hand, we're trying to drive toward clean air vehicles, EVs, that sort of thing. That's how I'm interpreting that. On the other hand, we're trying to reduce total vehicle miles traveled. Can you just flesh out why those are both goals, since ostensibly reducing vehicle miles traveled does include EVs?
This is a question I would need to follow up with you on, simply because the CAP is a very large document. I don't have those sections memorized, and I'm happy to provide you information on follow up, but also if you'd like to meet on the CAP, I'm happy to have a conversation on it, just as a new commissioner to our commission. I welcome that. Our CAP is dense, so I recognize it's a large document to get through, but I will follow up with you on that.
Any other questions? I don't have any questions. Thank you for the presentation. At this point, we'll go ahead and I'll ask for a motion. Oh, we don't need a motion. So I guess then we can, if there's no other questions of staff, then we can go ahead and move on to the next current business item, which is PL twenty three dash zero three eight one, and it's the preapproved accessory dwelling unit program. And staff presentation.
Good evening, Planning Commission. Again, my name is Priscilla Roldan, Associate Planner at the city of Escondido, and now I'm here to talk to you all about the preapproved ADU program, or PADU for short. This is an effort that kicked off earlier this year, and I am joined by Scott Martin, who is from RRM Design Group, our consultant. I will briefly let him introduce himself.
Thank you so much. Pleasure to be with you, Chair Commissioners, tonight. My name is Scott Martin. I'm a principal and partner at RRM Design Group. We're a fifty year firm who focuses on multi-disciplinary work. So we do landscape architecture, engineering, architecture, structural engineering, all of the house. We're collaborative by that nature. I myself am a licensed architect, so you can blame me for those kind of things, but I'm here tonight. Excited about your ADU program and wanted to share some details with you.
Thank you, Scott, and our request before you today is to receive this presentation and provide feedback on the program. But before we jump right in, I do want to just go over an agenda and a brief overview of what we're going to be talking about tonight during the presentation. I will begin with a bit of background on ADUs and some of the drivers on why we're here today. I will then provide a brief overview of the PADU program before I pass the baton to Scott, who will hone in on some of RRM's progress to date. So to give you all some background on accessory dwelling units, or ADUs for short, ADUs are small residential units in a single family or multifamily property. There are two different types of ADUs. There's a junior ADU and a regular ADU. And for junior ADUs, as the name denotes, they are smaller than typical ADUs. They range from a couple hundred square feet to five hundred square feet and are generally within the primary structure of the unit. While ADUs, on the other hand, they go up to a thousand square feet in the city of Escondido, and they come in various types. There is detached ADUs that can be standalone structures. There's attached ADUs, which share a wall with the primary structure. And then there's interior conversions, like garage conversions that's similar to a JADU, convert a space into a dwelling space. These units are also known as granny flats or in-law suites. And the purpose of the PADU program is to provide additional housing opportunities for households here in Escondido and offer a secondary income source for Escondido residents through a streamlined ADU permitting process. Back in twenty twenty, the California Department of Housing and Community Development awarded the city of Escondido with local early action planning grant funding. And this funding was to develop preapproved ADU plans in addition to other things. But in twenty twenty one, the city of Escondido underscored the need for these plans as part of the Escondido Housing Element Program two point one. And most recently, legislature approved Assembly Bill thirteen thirty two, which requires cities to develop and adopt preapproved ADU plans by January first of twenty twenty five. So earlier this year, in order to meet these state regulations, as well as some of the efforts that were, that have been, have started beforehand, city went off for RFP. We looked for a consultant, procured RRM, and as part of the PADU program, we're requesting RRM to develop some ADU plans that will not only comply with the Escondido zoning code, but also building code. We, RRM will develop a guidebook as long, as well as publication materials, both in Spanish and English, to help inform residents and guide them step by step through the ADU permitting process. They will also be doing a cost savings analysis for folks that do leverage the preapproved ADU program to analyze the cost savings associated with the program. There are some local jurisdiction evaluations for other plans, because as part of Assembly Bill thirteen thirty two, it does allow folks to take preapproved ADU plans from other jurisdictions and submit them into the city. So we will be looking into ramifications and understanding the compatibility between other plans with the city of Escondido. And we will also have two outreach events to educate the public for this program. So with that, I just want to highlight that we are in a tight timeline. The grant, this effort is grant funded, as I mentioned before, and there is a statutory deadline of September thirtieth, twenty twenty four. So we are doing our best to move through all these deliverables and expend all the funding by the deadline. So just want to make sure that we keep that in mind as we move forward with this. And with that, I want to pass the baton to Scott, so that way he can provide a brief overview of the effort so far.
Thank you so much, Priscilla. Can I just, oh, look at that. I've got technology to work. I'm off to the right track here. So I'm, as I said, we're licensed architects, but we don't know the city of Escondido like your staff does, like your applicants, like you do, and that's why we're going through this process now. Our starting point was really some honest due diligence to have a better grasp and understanding of what was happening within the city. So we looked at things like GIS data, previous plans, submittals, permit review. We talked to your staff, what sort of county people being submitted, what the community was looking for. We looked at, looked into lot sizes, whether some of the more traditional or reoccurring typical lot sizes within the city. That helped us sort of establish some parameters for size and shape and things like that. So we have been for a couple months now doing some research and due diligence. We, through, through the lead funding and some previous work, we have done this for other municipalities, we have started to hone in and focus on what was the priorities for Escondido. As a result, we're, we're here with your package to show four plans and two garage conversions. This will not work for absolutely everybody. We hope it can work for as many as possible. That's really our goal. This is not a one size fits all program, but we do hope one or six sizes fit most, and that's, that's what we're trying to achieve, is as much moderate low income housing as possible for individual owners and give them really a leg up and a half forward to achieve that, to achieve that obtainable housing. That's what we've done so far. Your package includes kind of where we're headed, not final product, but we're moving fast. In fact, we brought a new package today. That would have been different, because we are moving that fast based on funding and limited timeframes. We wanted at least give you an idea of architectural character, of unit plans, of elevations, and what these might start to look like and feel like. Again, we've been working hand in hand with staff. I think we consider ourselves a jurisdictional staff. I think the city just hired a couple architects to help you through this process. We have focused on affordability, on creating plans that are simple and that are cost effective. However, with overlaying enhancements of architectural detailing and material options in order to help focus on compatibility and contextualism with the individual plans. As you start to actually look at plans, that, you know, this is not a general plan. I'm hoping this is a little bit easier. This, everybody understands what a house is like. These are small homes, though. These are not properly what most of you live in. So on a small range, we're down to about four hundred eighty five square feet. We have options where that can either be a studio or a house or a bedroom. You'll see that in the plans, we found that the two shapes or forms that seemed to work the best was either a square plan or a rectilinear plan. A square plan looking better on a lockup is deeper and not as wide, vice versa. The rectangular plans would work best on the shoulder of a wire box with limited rear yard space. These still need to meet building code, and we find that when most people utilize these plans, they're putting them at minimum setbacks. California State law came out and said that the home setback is four feet. So you'll notice on most of the plans, there's a primary elevation, an elevation that we really see most people interacting with, because the others might end up right next to a fence or rather close to a property line. So we're a little concerned about too many windows for privacy sake, too much administration, too much architecture from a fire safety standpoint, being that close to the property line. So there are some reasons for the simplicity, but it also really helps with affordability, which the city is listed as its primary goal. You'll see a couple of other things in the plan. That's probably way bigger in your bathroom, even though the plan is way smaller than your house. There was a focus on aging in place and adaptability. We have found, and the city has requested, that a lot of these plans are being used as a form of multi-generational living, senior housing, a place for quote unquote mother-in-law. I have my own ADU. That's where my mother-in-law lives, so I have some experience with that. Though, therefore, we made most of these plans adaptable. That does not mean fully ADA requirements, but it means set up in a way where it could be. So instead of actually installing grab bars, we will provide blocking details and required clearances that those could be installed if needed. There is a, a way for, for these plans to be customized to individual user needs, to individual neighborhoods and architectural styles, but it was important for us to at least provide that extra room, really modest bathrooms, to make sure that if someone did need grab bars or wheelchair clearance, that we provided all the doors also meet the minimum clearance requirements. You'll see there's one primary elevation. That's the elevation that's typically seen the most, and the others may end up rather close to a property line, and we wanted to limit the, the privacy of a window leaning type or some things as such. Typical standard architectural dimensions were tried, were used as much as possible, so two foot spacing, eight foot plates, wherever we could. We tried to make these cost effective first. This is the second plan, the more linear plan. Again, works well, you know, have a very typical rear yard. Same sort of priorities were given to this plan as far as what was able to be done, the bathroom, could it accommodate a grab bar if needed? These start to grow. They can have either one or two bedroom options, where even as we get up to our larger plan around a thousand square feet, there's an option for a third bedroom. So these are all intended to be new construction so far that we've shown. There is a variety. There are four different sizes and then multiple configurations on how you do that. Again, that typical elevation where you're placing emphasis on front door, sense of entry, sense of neighborhood, sense of priority to, to use this bill. We wanted to show you this, that this was something we heard very early on in the process, that garage conversions are quite popular. That is probably the hardest plan to make widely available and off the shelf, if you will, because there's so many unique attributes about everybody's different garage. Luckily, for many years, garages have roughly been the same size, but not exact. So what we've done is show some typical arrangements of either a one car or two car garage. And more detailed in the actual construction documents will be things like required fire separation between the main residence and this, what, whether you have to add another layer of drywall or what you have to do to that wall to allow for two separate residences. Also, things like E rest and natural light ventilation become very important. As soon as you take away that big garage door, you need to replace it with things that still allow for safe building environments. So these, these were all very challenging to do. I think will be widely utilized. Not all jurisdictions that we've seen have done things, but a few have ones that have had taken advantage. It, again, it really does focus on safety issues as the exterior of the shell of a building, except that garage doors aren't there in place and just anticipates through windows or doors for life safety needs. This wasn't in your package, but based on some feedback, I thought I'd provide it. We, we take an approach in a way to, to make these potentially appropriate and compatible primary residences. You can do a standard plan, same roof inch, same wall, same wall construction, but vary either the exterior materials, the exterior colors, even the roofing colors and, and materials. So if you're in an HOA that has all Spanish style roof, barrel tile roofs, you can, we're designing these to allow for that, to allow for that to be placed on these units. So what you still do is take the same plan, and if your neighborhood is compatible, use asphalt shingles, which are much more common and more affordable. They allow for things for, like tile roof free clay or concrete shingles, those sorts of things. They all, we're worried about fire safety, life safety in current building campaigns, so we're using things that composite materials, the balls, recommending things, for example, you may have heard of hardy or cement, it's for a siding, it's for a structural siding. So there's a, a layer of energy efficiency and fire safety that is probably making these homes much more functional and much more usable than the primary residence quite often. We did want to address it. We don't have these yet, but we know that the old Escondido neighborhood is very. neighborhood is very sensitive, and we're working with those design guidelines to create what we're calling like an overlay enhancement, knowing that the simple box may not be compatible enough in that neighborhood, that we're looking at a way where you can still have the simple box, but much like the architectural example you've seen on the screen, at a heightened level of detail and articulation, whether it be kickers, whether it be knee racks, those sorts of things, to enhance that elevation in a way that will still be compatible. Keep in mind, many of these are smaller than your garage. So from a scale standpoint, creating overlay articulation, very, very small ones, can sometimes look more confusing than creating a simple structure that is well detailed and well articulated. So that is the goal that we've tried to apply so far, and we're looking forward to your feedback on that.
Okay, thank you. Actually, that was really informative, and I appreciate the time and the effort that you both put into this. Any questions of staff from the planning commission? Commissioner here?
Thank you, thank you for the good presentation. You have a couple of questions, some are relevant to maybe the design, and others just informational for me, I guess. Terms of the design, questions that we have. Well, let's see, first off, I guess, you had mentioned flexibility in materials, and you mentioned particularly roofing materials. Is the roof designed so that they could take on heavier weights if they were to swap them out?
That is the exact intent, it's just design totally is common denominator, so design for, in this case, usually that's concrete tile, that weighs the most, and then if you put asphalt shingles, it's less weight. So we have structural engineering in-house, we're looking at it.
Which leads me to the next question, that is, with this, I think, what, four plans and two conversions, these are, would somebody be able to, much as they do with, say, a four-foot retaining wall, they walk into a city standard, they say, no engineering needed, here it is, done deal. If someone were to pick this up, let's say, and want to say, hey, this is what I'm doing, is there essentially no plan review for this?
There is still plan review required, it will just be a little bit quicker because it is a pre-approved plan. So as part of this program, we are planning to go through the plan review process, so we do have that building check already in place, but there still will be a site plan, and the ADUs are still subject, and will be specific to each parcel, so they will be unique, they will still be reviewed by planning and building, which will just be a little bit quicker because we will have less mistakes and less, more of the questions to be answered, it'll just go through a streamlined process.
So that process, as you explained it, I'm visualizing, yeah, I think somebody's going to take a look at that, the city's going to take a look at that and say, well, let's look at where they're proposing to place this on the site, what are the setbacks, what are the, what's the context? When it comes to the building plan itself, if they're using this off-the-shelf ADU plan or PA-ADU, that component of it is off-the-shelf, so in terms of flexibility, they can say, well, I want to change the finishes, I want to change the, you know, whatever. As long as they stick to finish changes only, they have flexibility to do that. If they were to say, well, I want to add another, whatever, change the dimensions or whatever, that, would that invalidate their ability to use this plan, or how does that work?
That's a pretty good start, yes. That they, there is some flexibility that has to be non-structural, and it can't, cannot change the dimensions of the plan. So these will be plan-checked and permitted through your building official, who will review all of them and state to them, okay. That does not mean that you can just pull them and start building, you still need to get site plan approval. Think of almost a menu on the cover sheet of what you're going to do for utilities, how, what your exterior finish materials are there, and the manual itself, this other document, will guide you through that process. That being said, there are some functional things that are kind of cool, like an interior wall, if you want a studio, instead of going tiny one-bedroom, you could have it more open, more spacious, not put in an interior wall. Some other things like putting in a header that's big enough for a standard slider, so you can have a patio outside or something, but if you don't want the slider, you can still have a window, still use that same structural header, it's already structurally approved, it has the sheer value and the desired structural needs that you have. So there's some flexibility built in. As soon as you start saying, I want to change sizes and shapes and forms, it is higher protected, or at least it will experience that.
Quick question on the other jurisdictions, our neighboring jurisdictions, do we know where they stand in this similar process?
Yes, there are some jurisdictions that have already adopted pre-approved ADU plans, there are others that are still going through the process, so we are relatively early on. Our neighbors like Encinitas have pre-approved plans, Carlsbad does as well, and San Marcos is currently going through the process.
Okay, thank you. Just a curiosity question here, but let's say, let's say, I'm looking at the conversions, which are a little bit different story, but let's say you got ten houses consecutively on a street, and they all do two, these conversion, garage conversions, they take out their two-car garages, and they add people living there. Do we have anything that limits that, so that you don't get like all of a sudden no onsite parking anymore, or how, do we have anything that kind of limits that to some degree?
We don't have any regulations around parking, and California State Code does prohibit us from proposing or having any parking requirements, that is AB 2397, 2097, correct me if I'm wrong, Veronica, but it is codified State Code. If an ADU is close, within a half mile of a transit station, we cannot impose any parking requirement.
How about if it is not? Does that change things?
It does not. I would need to double-check exactly like the code and the ordinances that we have and associated ADU codes as well, because I'm not sure if there is a government code around that.
So to clarify, our adopted accessory dwelling unit ordinance, which is Article 70, requires no parking onsite for an accessory dwelling unit, consistent with state law. So right now, we don't have any adopted requirements to provide parking, and state law does not permit for us to require parking.
That contemplates the idea of adding parking for additional tenants that would be living there, but this goes further, and I guess the question goes a little further in saying eliminating existing parking, so we're actually going backwards by saying, well, we're going to take out onsite parking, or onsite parking, and convert it to habitable space. We're not only not requiring new parking for the new tenants, we're taking out parking for the existing tenants. Nothing limits that. I mean, that same law, I imagine, doesn't, doesn't, doesn't regulate that portion of it.
I'm going to double-check for you, I'm fairly certain it does, but we'll confirm and follow-up with you via email. And if all the commission would like to be followed up with, we can send that out to everyone so they're aware.
Thank you, those are my questions.
Commissioner Jester?
Thank you for that presentation, I appreciate it. A member of the public wrote in and had some comments, and her comment pertained to our PA-ADU program and how it might interface with HOA and POA. I'd like to know if you could have just addressed that on her behalf?
So the city does not require approval of HOAs for ADUs. That is a private matter between HOAs and the cities, but we do recommend for folks to talk with the HOA's Planning Review Board early on, and ADU plans that we are proposing are flexible enough to have material changes, so we're hoping that could help address that.
I think that was probably the question that she was concerned about, was that in an HOA, you have to go through the archery, and then, you know, they get to dictate, you know, what your, you know, your final look on the outside really looks like, and is it conform to the CCNRs within the neighborhood. So I think we've, I think we've answered her question. That sounds to me like another legislative-type issue that would have to be imposed on the ADU program here in the state of California. I do have a question about AB 1332, though. Staff report says, in part, Program 2.1 of the Housing Element seeks to address Assembly Bill 1332 requirement for cities to adopt and post a set of pre-approved accessory dwelling unit ADU plans on the city website by January 1st, 2025. I don't interpret the legislation that way. The legislation clearly reads that a program or implementation of ADUs is to be in place by that time, not necessarily the posting of the plans. Is that correct, or am I way off base here?
I am happy to check with our city attorney with that. I don't have the answer off the top of my head, I'll have to look at that for you.
I've got the statute here, if you'd like to look at it.
I'm not going to look at it right at the moment on the dais, but I'm happy to check into that.
I'm just curious, I wasn't sure if that was what the planning department was thinking, or what, because I interpret it completely different.
And I'll just interject with a little bit of clarification, because some of these things actually are not as sequential as they appear. So when the city updated our Housing Element to comply with six-cycle requirements in 2021, when we presented the first draft to council for adoption, we did include this program for accessory dwelling units. At that point, there was no state legislation on the books that required any type of ADU program for preapproval. We just, that was typically a program that was seen by a lot of jurisdictions to help facilitate the construction of ADUs. That's not to be confused with ADU law, which was on the books at that point, but no requirement for any sort of program related to preapprovals. We had adopted the Housing Element, we adopted that program, we applied concurrently for the LEAP grant funding and listed that as one of our funded programs, were granted that funding opportunity, many things happened, like COVID, really resulting in delays and implementation changes to the LEAP program funding from HCD, the state of California, and then the legislature adopts AB, I think, 1334, or SB 1334, which just happens to align, right? We had a program that happens to align with that legislation to some degree. So I wanted to clarify that timeline, that it was a program, and implementation of that program helps us fulfill the requirements of that legislation, but it's not exactly one-to-one, because that program predated that pre-approved program in the legislature.
I do have another question. So in the presentation and staff report, you provided really six ADU floor plans. Do you have any of the other supporting documents, like the guidebook, the cost savings analysis, or anything like that coming or ready? I mean, I'm looking at this from the aspect of a builder, and as I look at this, I can see certain things that I would like to see done to save on cost versus the way it's kind of laid out. Like right now, there's a lot of plumbing walls, I think I would try to put plumbing walls together on one wall wherever I could, kind of reorient plumbing fixtures and stuff like that, that would save some money. But have you given it any thought to, I'm assuming you don't have those other documents ready, or they're going to be forthcoming, or whatever?
Not at the moment, no.
I was really wanting to see that, because I do a lot of these, you know. How about solar? Do you have your engineering, you know, with your trusses and everything, everything you said was two-foot on center for the roof and stuff like that, any thought given to, you know, integrating some type of solar?
Yes, so solar's an interesting one, as are the state ADUs, depending on what you do with your primary residence. One of the few things, still, the building code allows you to put your solar on your primary residence that is supplying full of your ADU. There's also thresholds in the building code for certain unit sizes that are required, so it's very interesting. Again, we're going to design to the least common denominator, assume that there may be a solar system applied to, to, from a weight standpoint. That does not mean everyone will do that, but we're going to accommodate that for, it will not be in a base plan, if you will, but it is something that's.
One of the requirements of San Diego Gas and Electric to get an additional meter apart from the main house is that the location of the new meter on the ADU needs to be within 100 feet, or at least 100 feet from the existing meter. That's going to be a problem for a lot of smaller properties, so they're going to have to come off that, you know, that main house meter, and that, that could get ugly and really require, you know, a panel upgrade in order to service that. I would imagine that probably these, these ADUs would only be like a 50-amp panel, something pretty small, but still, you've got, you've got to run it halfway across the, you know, the property to, and there's a voltage drop and all that kind of stuff, so.
All great questions. We're working with the building department now to make sure that we're accommodating, again, not all require, et cetera, so it's interesting on when you actually have to put the meters, sub-panel on these, like that. Commissioner Jester, I love the semantics, and we happily, you know, talk for a long time about these sorts of things, it's definitely something we're working with the building department now to make sure we're accommodating. The last thing we want is a set of plans that nobody can use, but this is not a, this is not an IKEA flat pack box that comes out and you can put it together. There still are utility requirements, there's still our site, unique sensitivities, there's still seismic requirements, there's a lot still to go, we're just trying to give people a leg up and save on costs, so.
Sure. Well, I think for something you may want to consider as a part of value engineering is putting in a secondary meter in the ADU that is not serviced by SDGNE, so that the people, if they were going to rent out their ADU, would actually have a meter that they could actually, they would know what the consumption was from their main service and charge it accordingly.
I think I should add, that's my mother-in-law's unit.
I think that would be pretty attractive, that thing, right?
Any other questions, Commissioner?
I'm done, thanks.
Okay. Commissioner McCarroll?
This is probably more a question for staff. Can you please remind me, in the old Escondido district, what the COA would be for the ADUs? I know there was something in place, but I can't remember it offhand, about working in with the existing architectural design if any requirements were there.
Yes, so requirements for ADUs are that they have to be consistent with material as the primary residence. So if you had a stucco, let's say a Spanish stucco product for the primary, ADU would need to be stucco and in the same vein.
Thank you. And just on a note, I was very happy to see the additional exterior materials options. You're engineer, engineer, architecture and design, custom home builder, you know, real estate, we understand, and I think that was a good add.
Commissioner Stevie?
All right. I've got a couple of brief questions. And this goes back to the building side, and Commissioner Jester, he kind of touched on it, but I wanted to kind of further ask. When I'm looking at some of the dimensions, it seems to me, on my limited knowledge of construction, although I built a few things, you know, the two-foot, four-foot rule seemed to be like what I always wanted to try and follow, or was there a reason that that's kind of not the case here?
It's a great question, it's one of the ones we try to follow as well. You know, there's interesting dimensionality happening with lot sizes, so, and these setbacks, sometimes that's what's driving it. Imagine yourself pulling seven, that's fast, maximizing what you could do with a little bit of lot size. It also has to do with the two-foot, four-foot, pulling it out of the window, depending on what you do, whether you're focusing on the exterior or the interior. So sometimes you're doing two-foot space in the interior versus the exterior. And sometimes we're just trying, you know, a little bit more room for that big bathroom that needs to be pretty big for that load. So it's definitely, at our forefront, is cost consciousness. It does not have a sacrifice of working for your city and for your needs.
Okay, understandable. And like Commissioner Jester said, yeah, you know, trying to be cost-conscious when we're running plumbing and those sort of things. I thought his comments were excellent. One other question, and this may be for staff, and it has to do with the letter from a local resident about HOA. Does state law supersede HOA review, or does it not? In other words, if an HOA says, yes, you have to bring this ADU before our board in order to get approval before you can get a building permit?
I can answer that if you'd like, Veronica. Yeah, it does not supersede the architectural. The HOA cannot prevent somebody from putting in an ADU. State law does supersede in that regard, but in terms of the finish, the look of the ADU, they do have to go through the architectural. If that's a requirement of the HOA, it'll depend, of course, on what the ADU.
Understandable. One final question. With the ADUs that have been gone through the process, the building permit process, do we know about how long that's taken? If anybody from staff might know? I mean, is it, and I understand what we're trying to do here is speed up this process. But I was really curious, and maybe that's unknown only because each site's a little different. Each ADU is a little bit different. That two feet that they want to add is more than what the site can handle. So, but I was curious if you, if anybody on staff kind of knew an estimated time on how long it's taking to get an ADU permit issued?
It varies a lot in timeline, I think, to put it shortly, just because there are folks that contract architects directly. They know the loops, you know, the hoops they've worked here in Escondido, can get a permit in and out really quickly, and other folks do not. So it could just vary a lot, and I'm afraid to just pinpoint a 30-day or 60-day timeline when I don't work in the building department and as well as I don't do plan checks. So it's really hard to, Veronica, if you have anything to add?
There is, in the legislation, a 30-day period of approval or denial.
That is correct, Commissioner Jester. So as part of Assembly Bill 1332, pre-approved ADU plans will have a shot clock requirement of 30 days, which is part of the reason why we want to make sure that these ADU pre-approved plans are as streamlined as possible.
I have one other question, if I can.
Commissioner Jester?
Is there a fee on these, for these, from the city to somebody to use one of these plans, or?
So if I remember correctly, Assembly Bill 1332 prohibits us from charging folks from using the pre-approved ADU plans, but we are still allowed to charge for plan checking. And I would love to double-check that, but that's as far as I remember in terms of that.
I think you can under the, under the Assembly Bill. But it is a permitting fee.
It is a permitting fee, not the fee to use the pre-approved ADU plan.
Pay for the list.
All right, perfect. Commissioner Spear?
On that note, are we full cost recovery with the grant on the cost to generate these plans?
Can you clarify, Commissioner Spear, what you mean by cost recovery?
In other words, we access, I forget the name of the grant.
The Local Early Action Planning Grant.
Yeah. Does that, is that, I mean, what we're doing as a city is we're putting out costs to generate these plans, providing this for our citizens. Does the grant that we obtain cover those costs?
It does in full, yes.
Okay, thank you.
That does sundown, correct?
Can you repeat that?
The grant funds do sundown here in September?
September 30 of 2024 is the deadline that we have to expend the funds and provide all deliverables, yes.
Got it. That's where we're cut out, Ray Scott.
Any other questions of staff?
I would like to just follow up. Chair Wyler, if you have a moment, regarding Commissioner Spear's earlier question pertaining to the elimination of parking of a single-family home in the event that garage parking is converted. State law does prohibit us from requiring replacement of those parking spaces when an ADU is being, when a garage is being converted to ADU. And we can provide you that code section if you'd like.
All right. Mr. Rangel, do we have any other written communications that was not provided?
There are no other additional comments that were provided. Comments you provided via email and at your dais right now were the only ones.
All right, thank you. Any other questions? All right, terrific. Thank you. Well done. I'm glad that the city is doing this, even though it is kind of mandated, but I'm glad we're moving forward on this. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I think that's it here. We've got any other oral communications?
None at this time.
Planning commissioners' report, any, any planning commissioners have anything to report? City planners' report?
Good evening. Thank you, everyone, for your patience this evening as I return from time off and get back into the swing of things. As far as city planner report, just going over tentative future agenda items that you're aware of. We will be holding a meeting on July 9, which is our next regularly scheduled planning commission meeting. That is the week following the Fourth of July week, just so, not the same week. We do anticipate having a design review before the planning commission on a previously approved residential development. We also anticipate having that evening, I believe, a historic, the first historic request before the planning commission for review since the Article 40 revisions. And we will provide a robust staff report on what it is the planning commission's purview is, since that is new for everyone in the room, including planning staff. And we anticipate holding a meeting, the second meeting in July as well. We are working to get the bylaws cleaned up. I don't have an exact date at this moment, but we will anticipate getting that in as soon as possible, given the nominal changes to the bylaws. It's not a significant lift, but currently I am wearing two hats, and those hats are pulling me in different directions. So once our acting director of development services returns from his vacation, I will have more bandwidth to get that change made. And that's all I've got for now.
All right, thank you. Welcome back. Any other comments from planning commissioner staff? If not, we'll go ahead and adjourn our meeting.